May we have real call, please?
Mr. Esch.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Mayor Welch.
Here. May we stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance if you so desire. Thank you.
Let's pray. Here have me, Father. We come to you this hour, asking for your blessing and help. As we are gathered together, we pray for guidance in matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there additions or deletions to the agenda, sir?
So, the, uh, since there is a, I added, uh, resolution authorizing commercial industrial real estate contract with, um, out with airport, as well as the purchase of building.
Is any other additions or deletions? Do I have action?
I make a motion we add that to our agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we add to the consent agenda of resolution authorizing a commercial industrial real estate sale at Strawberry Field. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It passed. Do we have approval of the?
I will move that we approve the agenda with the addition of the item number four for consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Words and proclamations? Nothing? Recognition? Chet Renzau?
You get to see our beautiful faces today, don't you?
Looking great.
What's that?
You're looking great.
Hey, thank you.
Your part is really nice.
I actually look better, don't I?
Well, I'm not going there.
That's what I hear. Uh, anyway, uh, Mayor, City Commission, please join me in recognizing Chet Renzau. He obtained his fire officer designation through the Center of Public Safety Excellence. He is only one of 520 designees, um, worldwide. So, it's quite accomplishment. The fire officer designation is used, uses a comprehensive peer review model to evaluate candidates seeking credentialing. Candidates are and must demonstrate their excellent and seven measured components. Experience, education, professionalism, development, professional contributions, community involvement, and technical competence. Chet was able to, uh, exceed all these requirements. And achieving this designation signifies that Captain Renzau is committed to his career in the fire service and also as well as the citizens of Ark City, Kansas. So, join me and give him a big hand.
There's no plaque, no paper, and no?
He's, he got a certificate. So, we should have brought that with us.
Chet, that's an awesome, awesome award.
Quite an accomplishment. Thank you, man.
Yeah, it took a lot of work.
I don't imagine they just gave it to you.
So, how, how long, how long was the program that Chet go through? I mean, in months or was it over several years?
Well, it's actually several years because they, they look at everything you do as far as education. You know, National Fire Academy, your credentials, uh, your certifications, what you've done out in the public, which Chet had a strong, Captain Renzau had a strong background in fire prevention as well as fire marshal. They take into a lot of that consideration that goes to the board. And they, it takes quite a while because they go back and forth. Uh, the only problem is, is that now that he's got it, he's got to continue keep going because it's, he's got to renew it every three years.
Oh, recertification hours.
Yes. And, uh, so that'll require ongoing commitment by him. But, the good thing is with, uh, continuing ed- education, you know, one day he'll get the chief's officer designation. So, it'll be good.
Oh, thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Congrats, Chet. Congratulations.
Do we have any other visitors or? Consent agenda consists of the minutes of the last meeting, ratification of a board member to visit Ark City Board of Trustees, to visit Ark City, okay, and a resolution authorizing a public meeting of the governing board to attend the land bank board of trustees meeting at 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 21st, in the commission room at City Hall.
Just number four.
And number four to our consent, to the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to us this evening.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, same sign. I show no ope business. New business.
Consider first reading of an ordinance upon municipal code to create section 50F1, requiring a special event permit to close for a private event in a city park, street, or other facility that otherwise is open to the public.
Are, is there any comments, motions, opinions?
Well, I might just suggest that, uh, since it's the first reading, uh, you know, I think that, why not let the public take a look at this? Because there's a lot, lot to, to this, uh, ordinance, you know, there's a lot of fees, schedules, and, and, uh, the, uh, main thing is, is what, is the changes that we're going to be doing for, uh, charging people for tables and stuff like that.
That's not uncommon, though.
No, it's not.
It's already, that's already there, correct? The fees are there. This is, yeah, I agree with, I don't disagree at all with table. I think also, I think it's just allowing communication through all departments from the people renting, from the organization of those renting this facilities or equipment to all the city staff. I don't think it's, it just makes it easier to check the boxes and be organized. But, I do agree, you know, letting the public have a view of it would not be a bad idea so they know before.
I concur with that. We need to, we need to let the public in on these so that they have an opportunity to speak if they want to or get ahold of us if they want to.
I agree also. It does make it easier if people take the interest in wanting to rent the property. They take the interest in knowing what it entails. So, I'll make the motion that we move this to a second reading.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and a sec, sec. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Number two.
Can I have that too? Consider a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a supplemental design services agreement with LK Architecture Wichita for professional architectural, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and structural engineering services for the Wilson Park master plan phase one upgrades for a total amount not to exceed $5,500 and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the project agreement for land and water conservation fund project number 20-0075.
Have a discussion?
Well, I'm concerned again about the money for the project, and I'm concerned about spending more, uh, on the project. Is this going to come out of the money that we already have there?
My understanding, the, the dollars for this would come out of the, um, the, the funding that we have through, um, the VJ Wilkins, is that correct?
Yes.
You referring to the $5,500 for the services?
Yes.
Um, we do currently have money in the fund for the two installments from the Wilkins grant.
Correct.
So, that is accessible for that.
And so, that's what we're going to take the money out of?
That's my understanding.
The $5,500, can that come out of the Wilkins improvement from the?
I have broad information. Why is that be a research that?
Well, mine, it would come out of where our fund, the prior $60,500 had been paid out of, and I believe that's how that has been handled.
I'm sorry, I didn't under, what?
There's already $60,000 that's been expended for the design services. So, however that's been handled or however that's been paid out, this would be, it's an addendum on to the existing.
But, we don't know how, it's been paid out through the Wilkins money or we don't know?
I'm, I believe it's just been paid out of the general fund, hasn't it?
We paid.
The design services, the LK Architecture, has just come out of the general fund?
No, it has come out of capital improvement.
It is out of capital improvement.
So, it is out of the VJ Wilkins money that was for that project?
I can say that if we're making a change, I thought that it's already been seconded, but it's still.
There was already some funds in there, um, from when we did the initial master plan. So, I don't have the exact breakdown, but it's essentially, it's kind of, this is really just an update of the plan that's already been produced because there are some changes that were needed. Um, and with Randy coming on board, we wanted to kind of take a fresh look at it. And part of the reason for it, as you recall, last time we discussed this, and I think it was back in February before all this, um, we were going to look at a project manager approach. Uh, that was investigated. There was some negotiations and then eventually kind of fell through. Um, our fallback on that then was, we had Mike Bellis, and we thought, well, he's got enough experience on a lot of this that he could act as sort of a general contractor for the city. But, what we're finding is there's so much construction going on of Creekstone and some of the other work that he's having to work inspections on, um, he doesn't have the time available for it. So, one of the reasons we're wanting to do this is that we need to re-engineer everything that was produced to be a single bid package, and it would have to go out to bid. Um, so, some of the ideas we have for cost savings that we're going to put some of that burden internally, uh, is not really a workable approach. So, it's really, the majority of what needs to be done. There's also some re-engineering of the bathrooms. We had suggested looking at a different design, so he's working on that. That should achieve some cost savings on the construction for the restroom facility.
Is it possible, Andrew, to put this on hold until we know, I mean, we're in a pandemic, until we know where funds are coming from or going to? Is it, this is, so you're saying that you want to do this strictly to bring a, a new light for the new city manager?
Well, if you want to put the design work on hold, that's fine because honestly, this project is not moving forward very quickly, as you're well aware, and we don't anticipate construction occurring probably this year, given the challenges. I would ask, though, that you would consider going ahead and accepting officially the grant because we are really honestly six months late on the deadline to return that paperwork. And this is kind of the drop dead. They contacted us and said, we need to get that taken care of or we were going to lose that money permanently. And whether or not we end up proceeding with the project, I hate to lose any grant because that damages your ability, I think, in the future to get further grants. And that's, that's a grant, it's a federal grant, but passed through the state. So, that would anger two entities, I think, if we just didn't get it done. And so, you know, if, if we need to detach that, that's fine, but, um.
Yeah, and you were saying, was it at the work session we just had where you said we could, we could authorize the grant to be accepted, but if we decided not to move forward with the project, we would just simply return it? Is that correct?
Well, it's a reimbursement grant. You'd have to spend the money to get it anyway. So, if the project doesn't move forward, then.
We have to spend it and then?
If it's like most of those grants, you know, once, once you're, once you're approved, the money is there, but you have to be, you have to show documentation. They don't just send us a check for $300,000.
We can get up to four draws out of that $300,000, split up over the, I guess it'd be close to a two-year time period. Um, there is a process. If for some reason the project is going to be permanently canceled, you have to go through, there's paperwork to submit. But, I'd rather us do that than not turning the paperwork off the bat and losing what has already been awarded.
So, it's four draws over two years?
Uh, yeah, up to September 2022. We'd have to have the project substantially completed by then or you can go and kind of amend the timeline if you need to. One thing I didn't put in the action, I might want you to be aware of, is there is actually a potential for additional grant funding if we get this paperwork turned in. I've been informed by, um, the LWCF coordinator for the state that some were, she didn't give me an exact amount, but potentially it could take our $300,000 and push it closer to $450,000. It'd probably be the top end. There would have to be some additional application done. But, basically, they've got a pool of money they know is coming, and I guess the current iteration of the program is coming to an end, and they'll have to be reauthorized at the federal level and it'll look different. And as a result, some people aren't going to get their projects done. Long story short, there might be some extra money available if we think we're going to be proceeding by the year.
So, that's Land Water Conservation Fund is what you're talking about?
Yes. But, I didn't want to put that in there as anything to count on because that would be up to, that can be, yes. Yeah, and it's just an opportunity I wanted you to be aware of that there could be some.
Well, we've been looking at this for a long time, long time. And we start putting anything else off, and $5,500 is not that much evidently, uh, with what we've been talking about. So, I move that we authorize a resolution authorizing the city of Arkham City to enter into a supplemental design services agreement with LK Architecture Wichita for professional architectural, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and structural engineering services for the Wilson Park master plan phase one upgrades for a total amount not to exceed $5,500 and authorizing Mayor Karen Welch to sign and execute the project agreement for land and water conservation fund project 200075.
To have a second on the motion? And I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Well, are we going to have a?
Oh, I'm sorry, Brandon. Did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Brandon, every night, is the LKA firm, is that the same firm that we spoke to $33,500 with for the initial concept and development?
Yes.
Or are we hiring a different firm?
No, it's the same firm.
You're welcome. Thank you. Something.
How much money, Andrew, is in the fund for this park?
The sheet I have doesn't have it broken down by project. There's another grant in there. But, essentially, we received $68,500 from VJ Wilkins in 2018, $68,651 from VJ Wilkins in 2019, and we're anticipating the final $68,000 payment at the end of this year.
But, we missed the deadline, did we not?
That's part of the original.
That's closed out?
Three, let's see.
In June of?
The original 205,954. That was three payments of installment. I did talk to Otis Morrow today, and he is, uh, going to get us copies of all the paperwork that had been exchanged back and forth between the city, make sure all of our records are current. As I understand it, even though I was informed, and I think you were informed, that the deadline was extended one year to, uh, July 1 of 2019, there isn't actually any formal paperwork on that. Um, basically, there's been changeover on the board, and obviously, we've had changeover. So, our plan is right now, they meet in September. Um, we're going to try to make a fresh presentation to them and see if we can all get back on the same page. And I hope they'll be understanding that part of the delay in all this has been, you know, we had the issues to work out with the hospital, and now we've had the pandemic. There's just been some challenges thrown our way. Um, and so, we'll see what we can work out. So, I, you know, the amounts that are listed, um, at the end, it's just to give you an idea of what we currently are kind of picturing as drawable amounts. None of that stuff is confirmed. Randy and I are going to be working to re-establish contacts with these organizations and, and get everything on paper because that's my biggest thing. Is there's a lot of talk and a lot of handshaking, but we don't have good records of what, uh, we can rely on. So, before we would ever let bids on a contract for construction, we're going to have absolutely firm answers on those funding sources. This is really just trying to get the last percentage of the design work done and ready to go out the door. And then, LK's out of the picture. Honestly, at that point, you're looking at hiring a contractor to oversee the project.
Okay. So, according to Jennifer, we've got about 136,000 total sitting, uh, to move around. Uh, I don't have a problem with approving the grant to go through, as Randy discussed, uh, before. But, I don't want to spend any more money on this. And as you said, Andrew, it doesn't have to be done today. Just as long as the grant part, uh, you can make sure that you've got that locked in. And if we decide to move forward, then it would be there.
Yeah. 136,000 would be, I'm guessing, those two installment payments. So, we're anticipating, like I said, another 68,000. I, you know, we need to meet with Creekstone. We need to have a discussion about how exactly they want to do that. We need to meet with the Wilkins Foundation. So, there's definitely legwork that needs to be done to get this, before we would bring back to you a construction contract. And I don't think we're anticipating honestly doing that in 2020 just with the way things are right now financially. We need to be cognizant of the situation. But, the idea is to get this done and out of the way and ready to go so that such time that we do have the funds secured and we're in a better position that we can move forward on it.
Mayor, is the motion that they're together?
No.
So, what was the motion again?
The motion is for, uh, the architectural of Wichita to do the phase, master plan phase one upgrades for $5,500. And then, authorizing me to sign and execute the project agreement for the, um, LWCF.
Okay. So, are the motions together is what I'm asking, or are they separate?
It looks to me like it's together, Kenyon.
That's what Dwayne.
The resolution in the packet would do both of those items.
Would it?
If you're wanting to take something out, I'll need an amendment to that.
Do you have something, Mr. Ken?
Yeah, I have just a quick question. So, if we don't have secured funds for the entire amount, correct?
For the entire amount of what, sir?
Of this project.
Total project, we don't, do we?
No.
We do not have secured funds for. Do we have a scope of, of cost of operation, which has cost to run this thing over a period of years?
I haven't seen.
Run, run.
Run, uh, a, a, is that what you're saying?
There is an OEM plan that was submitted to LWCF as part of, um, it's an operations statement. Um, but because of the nature, the way the water is recycled, it's, there's not a lot of water consumption. The bigger consumption is on, I think, the chemical side, but.
If you are consuming power, you are consuming chemicals.
Yes, there would be some electrical cost.
Since that's a cleanup law base, so do we have a direct cost or, or a known cost of what we can possibly run this thing?
I wouldn't think that would be possible at this time.
It should be possible. Definitely possible. Energy consumption.
We can get.
These are all over the place. This is the first one. Many of them are shut down because of the operating cost.
Oh, I didn't know that.
If you combine it with your, say, your pool, your pool filtration, your pool's water, and you're, you're doubling up. Plus, you have to have staff on this. Kansas has people who use it, some of you this size.
The chemicals, I believe, are the same as those used at the pool.
And what's going to happen into the future of this thing. So, if we spend a million bucks on it, then what's going to cost, what's going to cost to keep it in service? I think that should be a major consideration. The operational costs of the water feature are great. You don't have any funds in town anymore because you've got to analyze over there. I think we're a little bit card, uh, carded in the horse.
I can reach out to Jeff and have him contact Hydrodromatics and get us the information they have. I know that they do, when they, when they do the design, they model essentially what you can kind of expect on the consumption and those items. I just don't have those handy. But, I do know it was designed intentionally to use the same chemical treatment as Paris Park Pool so that there wouldn't be any additional chemical costs in the sense of having to buy something special. The idea is that we're already purchasing those chemicals. Let's make sure that they're compatible. So, I can get that information for you.
Okay. Yes.
Call for a question.
One of the things they're asking, they're asking, in, in the packet, in, in the spirit of transparency in things, you know, on page 59, it shows Creekstone admitted $300,000 in a gift, uh, friends of Wilson Park, $15,000, and the grant, of course, $300,000, and VJ Wilkins, $394,000. And it, it sounds as if, what I'm hearing, and I've already a little bit done my own research, is you guys don't have a commitment from VJ Wilkins and or Creekstone at this point. And, you know, I, I stand here today to tell you, I, I'd love to see you guys pass a motion to accept that grant because I, I wouldn't want to see you pass that $300,000 of federal tax dollars that we've already paid for. But, maybe, maybe Mel's right in the sense of going cart before the horse a little bit, but we don't have all the figures. We don't have the commitments and things like that. Why spend another $5,500 until we know we're going to get a commitment? Because if, if alls we have is a $300,000 matching grant from, from, uh, federal fund for this federal grant, we may not move forward if we don't have $300,000 from Creekstone or $300,000 from VJ Wilkins. So, uh, yeah, I know both of you guys got a motion on the table, and I appreciate that, and I respect that. I would like to see you guys break them up and accept the grant and maybe push off the, uh, $5,500 bucks until you figure out what, what's next. Thank you.
Yeah, I was.
Would that $5,500 allow us, is it going to help show ways to save money on this project long term if the project were to proceed? Is that part of the $5,500 is to help with the reduction of some costs or maybe cost-saving measures for the project?
I recall.
I think he said there could be some reduction on the restroom facility, just the way the re-engineering of it could shave some costs. Is it going to be significant? I don't know.
No.
That would be the case. Um, you know, I agree with the statement that we don't have hard, well, we certainly don't have cash in hand. And like I said, we're working on picking up the pieces on what agreements were made. But, if the last communication that I was given was that Creekstone was actually thinking bigger than that number of $300,000. And while that number was not an obligation, it was consistently mentioned multiple times. It's in the minutes of several different city commission meetings that there was an understanding that, that, that they would honor that commitment. So, we're going to reach out to them, and we're going to make sure that it's still the case, certainly.
But, but it was $30,000 a year for 10 years.
That was the initial. What I was communicated to was that then they wanted to just make one payment and do it in one check. Now, again, I don't have that in writing, and that's where we're going to see if that's still what they're thinking. But, that's, that's somewhere along the line, that idea changed. And then, my understanding is that that came from them. That didn't come from us. Um, and as far as the VJ Wilkins, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what their commitment to the project, the entire master plan will be going forward. Um, I'm very optimistic to, I can notice today that they're firmly behind the vision of the master plan. They're still very committed to investing money in the park in, in honor of VJ. Um, it's just what form is that going to take? And, you know, there are other components of the master plan they want to fund. I believe all along, there was a hope that once the Burford obligation was satisfied, that they would maybe shift some of that kind of investment level toward the park plan. And that's just what we need to talk to them about and, and present where we're at and explain, you know, what we're hoping to do and, and get the new members of the board up to speed and understanding that. So, I, I firmly believe, even if these specific amounts don't work out, that we will find other sources of funding. And in the meantime, the project will not proceed until we know we have the funding in hand. Um, but I do hope that we can get the engineering tied up and get it ready to go. And then, we'll just see where fundraising and the other efforts take us in the future.
We have been delaying this for since what? Last November, October?
Um, we got the award letter last November that we had officially received, uh, the $300,000 grant. We were asked in December to submit the paperwork. There was an email exchange about getting it done in January. And I think in February is when we had preliminary conversations about the project. And then, we, you know, everything kind of stalled out on us, and that's where it's kind of set since then. So, honestly, Department of Wildlife and Parks, I think, have been incredibly patient with us. It's not, it's not very usual to wait almost eight months to submit your paperwork.
I think $5,500 is a small amount to pay to increase the activities in the park for children that cannot afford to go to the pool because if our pool continues to use all that water, we're going to have to raise the rates more. And we may have to close the pool down. Then, what are we going to do? I mean, $5,500 is not that much considering what we've spent for other things already.
And, and.
$5,500 is not much. It's.
Just a moment, ma'am.
And I'm, I'm not saying that it, I would like to see the question divided up and perhaps the $5,500 be put on hold for a little bit until we have some further, um, reflection on where we are. I mean, to do an update on a plan that was already 30-plus thousand dollars. Um, we got that plan when? Uh, last summer?
Well, the master plan was the 30,000. That was completed and unveiled in 2017. Um, and then, the additional 60,000 is for the actual engineering design, architectural documents, so the actual construction schematics.
So, they've, they've got 90,000-plus dollars already.
If you go back to twenty fifteen when I started working on this, yes.
Yeah.
But all that has been paid for by VJ Wilkins.
Right, but.
And that's where this is gonna come from eventually, or the grant for the LWCF grant, so.
But didn't.
What are we complaining about? I mean, what do we need? We're not, we're not doing the whole pro- process, building the whole project right now. We're trying to get plans down that we can afford, that we can see and get actual cost on.
Well, yes, I mean, we want the finalized documents because then you can go out to bid and see what your cost is actually gonna be. We're still working off engineers' estimates.
Ma'am.
Uh, I don't like you conflating the pool with the splash pad. You're insinuating the pool's gonna be shut down for cost of operations. You don't know what it is, no idea what the cost of operation actually is. Your water loss could be all kinds of things, evaporate, but back to what I was saying, you've already paid the engineers ninety thousand dollars, is that correct? The pool ain't giving them another five thousand dollars, they can save us money. Now, why didn't they do that in the first place is a kind of a question unless we overscope the job. It's our fault that they did it, it's we overscoped. But if we're always scoping this thing, that means we're underestimating how much it's gonna cost. Because our plan was to spend a million or less. The reason our plan was to spend, what, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, then six hundred thousand, now it's a million. We keep escalating these costs, throwing more and more stuff into this mix, and it costs install taxpayer money to jet. Let's say you take twenty-five grand, I bring a lot of money, my world.
What taxpayer money are you talking about?
VJ Wilkins money, any money spent by a government is essentially taxpayer money.
VJ Wilkins is not government money.
Government donation or in which all, all money spent by government is considered taxpayer money because it's only the place I am taxpayer seller somehow. So if they granted you a bunch of money, not the federal, you granted, granted you, it's not taxpayer money. You didn't make it.
VJ Wilkins is not taxpayer money.
Taxpayer money, they were taxpayer. They donated much, it's taxpayer money.
That come out of her estate. That's estate money, Mel. It's estate money. The money that's.
Taxpayer money, they earned it.
Okay.
I'm gonna call the question.
Well, okay, so we're gonna vote on calling the question?
I'm going to call the question for the two parts right now because that's the motion that was made, okay?
I know, but to call the question, you're calling whether everybody's done with the discussion?
Okay.
No.
And that, yes, is that correct?
I'm calling the question because we've had enough discussion.
But.
Call the question. Did you say, is it, is everybody done? Call the question, not command, request.
It's request to vote.
No, it's request. Is anybody gonna talk?
Go ahead.
Leave the damn rule.
Go ahead, Canyon.
Well, I just, I'm asking that it be separated, that we have the uh, grant.
One part, two part?
One part, two part. That we have the grant, we have the fifty-five hundred.
Okay, it was read and as one part. I'm going to go ahead with the resolution as read and seconded. And I'll ask for a vote for the two parts at this time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we can have a motion authorizing.
I make a motion that we execute the project agreement for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF Project Number two oh zero zero seven eight five for the three hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, now the motion is authorizing to sign and execute the project agreement for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the signature then is agreed upon and we'll move on.
No, we got it, we got the first part of the resolution, fifty-five hundred dollars.
And the first part of it, and fifty-five hundred dollars, okay.
By itself.
By itself.
What I'd like to see, Andrew, is, I'm just talking for me myself, as one commissioner, is to get, with you and the city manager, get with Creekstone and see what they're, see if they're still involved in three hundred thousand dollars and see what the payment's gonna be on that, whether it's gonna make one check, like you said, you thought earlier, or it's ten thousand dollars over ten years and, and uh, and then uh, uh, of course, we know about this grant and then the Wilkins Foundation, you said you're gonna or, I mean, they're gonna, are they supposed to pay you for this last, uh, sum of money this year or, or do you know yet?
We will get the sixty-eight thousand payment at the end of this year. Of the original challenge grant, what's in question is the remaining approximately just under three hundred thousand, if if that's attainable or not, or we need to work that.
And what do we got in our account right now? I mean, can, we're kind of confused about Kathy, don't, I mean, we need to know what her balance is to what's in that account.
Jennifer said last, uh, when, when was it Kathy, that we talked? Was that Thursday? Yeah, a hundred and thirty-six or a hundred and thirty-seven thousand total.
Okay.
Is that correct, Randy? Thank you.
We can get the exact amount though.
And getting back to fifty-five hundred dollars, what uh, uh, how soon do this engineering firm need to know about this thing? I mean, it's.
Oh, that, that's not urgent. And honestly, what I'm, from what I'm hearing, if if the issue is the scope of the agreement and what you're wanting, I mean, we can have Jeff come down to a work session and talk through that. Maybe we need to adjust the scope a little more. That really was just discussion between him and staff, so. Um, you know, if that would be fine, I could have him see if he's available for the next work session next week and.
So are you wanting to withdraw that?
I would, yeah, I would say let's, when we get to that point, let's just see if we can get a little bit, see what funding we have secured. If we're getting close to it, then let's have him back. So, okay, now we know what we're getting at, now we know what we can do, and then we can narrow that scope down or leave it as is or move it around
That's true.
and adjust it just a little bit, just to make sure we're not, we're, we're covering a majority, if not all of it, through grants, you know?
I think we just need to, to start giving the information and update.
Well, and also like to know, you know, like Mel was talking about the cost of it too, but I know we, I know way back when, they brought the cost of it. I can't remember what it was at one time. We had a work session, and I think you were there, Mel, but I forget now, you know, what it was and stuff, and I mean, it's just been too long.
We just need the, we just need to come too long.
It would be.
That's a good idea.
There have been so many different costs associated with this.
I would, and I don't know if these people, whoever do these cost estimates, if they're also able to do an estimate, not saying we're even going to address the pool, but maybe see what they're, where are we losing money at the pool while also doing cost estimate? They may be two different companies, two different things, but if you have someone coming down that could do this, maybe it'd be nice at least say, here's where we're at with the pool. Not saying it's gonna be together or changing one or the other. I'm not suggesting, we're picking one, it'd be nice to at least start having some information. If we are losing water in the pool, is it through evaporation, is it from kids jumping out of the pool all day long? Because kids coming in out of pool will take water out of a pool. We all know that with kids. So it'd just be nice to kind of have an idea if we have a company coming down, we can pay them to do one, maybe kill two birds with one stone type thing, is all I'm suggesting. And I'm not tying a splash pad and a pool together. I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm not even hinting at that, so.
I think it's just been such a long time since we've even discussed Wilson Park. I think we just need to come back and refresh some of our information that we've had and go that route.
And that's why I'd like to have Jeff talk to you because he can explain, you know, he's gone in and taken things out to try to shave down the cost estimate and we're hopeful if bids come in low, maybe some things can be added back, but he can better explain than I can, all the iterations of the estimates and things that he's been working on.
We'd appreciate that.
But I, I don't think waiting two weeks or a month is gonna break his heart. I mean, he's been on retainer for us for five years now, so.
So how many times have we changed the uh, plans themselves?
The master plan.
I've seen, just in terms of like estimates of every phasing, I've probably seen four or five different versions.
Well, I'm sure it's gotta change, okay.
That all, that all takes architectures, architects do that.
And to know which one is the most up to date is.
And they don't do it for free, so.
Well, and then you have to factor, I mean, they inflate the costs, of course, because we have inflation to contend with.
Well, the other thing is, we got a new city manager that hadn't seen any of it, other than just talking about, you know, the last couple of sessions, you know, here at our meeting stuff. And he needs to look at it too, and, you know, so it's gonna be, if these. Well, I still don't think fifty-five hundred dollars is much to pay to get this thing moving some more than we've just been sitting on our desks for.
Well, it's not because we wanted to.
Three or four years.
Yeah, we've done a lot.
Well, we could have, well, I won't get into what we talked about last Thursday, but that's part of it, so.
Okay, anything further?
So what are you gonna do about the first part? You're gonna postpone it?
Postpone it. Do you have a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
City manager updates.
Thank you. Well, in your packet, there's some dates on some upcoming meetings, uh, that you might be interested in, so. And uh, some of the highlights would be the census, uh, Bureau will be having some numerator meetings uh, throughout the July and uh, that's pretty important. We want to make sure we get a good count of our community. And so the rest of them, there's a uh, legislative, I don't know where to add here. We got some um, the legislative committee meeting uh, next uh, week in Winfield, and I believe there's some candidates gonna be talking, you know, they're visiting about their uh, county commission.
I'll be here.
Race is going on.
Actually be here.
Okay.
So, just kind of highlights on that.
That's this week, actually, I believe.
Is it, is it?
Yeah.
On the.
It's the night, yeah.
Night?
Where's that gonna be at?
What time is it?
It's.
Uh, Biden Square.
Okay.
What is?
The legisla, the county commission debate or questions?
Yeah. Um, we had a meeting uh, this week with uh, a potential business, uh, looking at a community development block grant, uh, for some commercial, um, realizations. So um, just cut, I'll have some more information for that soon, but we had all kind of old players in, in town on that, uh, Rosemary Saunders with uh, Rancin' and uh, Carrie with Cali First and some code enforcement people here, but uh, um, just kind of let you know, we're trying to work on some things to start economic development, uh, using some outside dollars to help with that. And then um, I have a meeting tomorrow with Don Edwards on Compass Point, uh, kind of, trying to get some things moving along there, so we'll be discussing some ideas on that to get that, that moving again. And then um, start moving the town next week, so um, at the beginning of the week, I'll be kind of hit and miss, so, but uh, be getting my, my personal belongings here, so.
Are you asking for volunteers?
Yes, anyway, I want something moving, that'd be great, so I wanted you to be aware of that, so.
Andrew, do you have an idea on the census, how Arc City's doing? I know at one point we were below either the state average or the national, I don't, I saw it somewhere, I can't remember what average we were below. Was it the national we were below, like four or five percent? I don't know if we've, I know we did a drive-through, didn't we, the other day or a week or so ago?
It was last uh, last Saturday of June, I think.
Not a week ago.
What did, yeah, it was.
Uh, if you don't have, that's why I said, no, if you had any up, up-to-date info.
Cali County is at sixty-three point one percent. It's like, it's honestly really stalled out over the last month or so um, as their advertising dollars ran out, so we're just trying to get, trying to get those people that have responded yet to please try to do it by themselves. We've got to have a, get a numerator knock on their door. The numerators will start making the rounds probably in August and that, after we'll conduct all the way through October at the back end. Um, hang on, let's see.
Everybody in this room, have you filled out the census?
Andrew, everything's been extended forward for like four or five months.
That census, if you do it online, doesn't take a whole lot.
I did it online. It was just as easy as can be.
What do you want to say, Jay? I said it's all, the, the, it's all been extended forward, I think, in it.
Yeah, they're, they're pushing everything back to show the six months.
Yeah, yeah.
Park City as a whole is only at fifty-seven point one percent, um, self response rate, so we definitely have some work to do still. And the parts of town that are lagging the most is southwest Arkansas City, which is uh, only forty-four point nine percent, and then southeast Arc City is at fifty-one percent. So that's where the committee can try to focus their efforts and if you have any good ideas for ways to do outreach in those areas and try to get that word out, please let us know, we're rocking our brains.
Last, break food. That's exactly what I was thinking.
One thing we are trying to do is connect the pandemic response to how your tax dollars are portioned by the census. So all the food programs that people had to take advantage of over the last few months, you know, there's federal borders behind that. Obviously healthcare is on, so trying to make it more relevant to people, understand why it is so important to get that down.
There's at least two guys in here with giant cookers and I often see that in their future.
We had your plan to be there, we don't get canceled everything.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anything further?
Adherent?
Second?
I'm sorry, motion second? Adjournment? All those in favor say aye.
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Okay.